Here.
Kowalski here, Hack.
Here.
Streeter.
Here.
Thank you. Report on public notice please.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm. Public notices were posted at the district office, also at the village municipal offices and at US Bank, and they're also sent to Fond du Lac reporter, KFIZ 107.1 and WFDL News on Friday, May 8, 2015.
Mr. Sado, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great name of justice for all.
Alright, thank you. The minutes were distributed as part of your meeting package. Does anyone have any additions or corrections related to the minutes from last meeting? Hearing none, then we'll stand and prove as they will present it. Next on the agenda, the treasurer's report. Mr. Streeter.
Cash and balance, or cash, cash balance on hand April 27, 2015, ninety-six thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. Receipts from the 20th of April through the 11th of May, fifty-five thousand five hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. Transfers from investment accounts, five hundred thousand dollars. Total receipts, six hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred one dollars fifty-six cents. Expenditures from the 20th of April through the 11th of May, six hundred forty-two thousand two hundred seventy dollars and twenty-two cents. Total expenditures of six hundred forty-two thousand two hundred seventy dollars and twenty-two cents. Cash balance on hand, May 11th, 2015, ten thousand two hundred thirty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Transactions bills are recommended for payment as shown on attached list dated May 11th, 2015, the amount of three hundred two thousand three hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion from the board for approval of the disbursements.
Make that motion. I'll say it.
Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Streeter?
Yes.
Hack?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Streeter? See the question.
I don't even know what to say. How do I say it? I don't have anything to say.
Due to the shortness of our meeting calendar, too.
Okay? Thank you. Student council report.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so in the past few weeks that we've had since our last meeting, student council has voted on our student council scholarship. This is a new scholarship this year due to the increase of funds we decided that we were going to give back. What it is, is one of the seniors in student council is eligible for a hundred dollar scholarship. The whole entire council votes on that senior if they're willing to run, and then they receive the scholarship. At this time, we're not releasing who won the scholarship. We have a student council car wash coming up. We talked about this earlier at the last meeting. It's going to be May 17th. The time is not confirmed. It's going to be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, right in front of the high school. As of right now, we are, all of our student council is going through elections. Junior elections are this week. Sophomore elections are the week after. And freshmen's the week after the sophomore. And then we'll be holding the officer elections on May 29th electronically. Wait, that's all I have to go.
Any scuttlebutt about who possibly could be your replacement? Have you heard anything, anybody out there polling? Anybody trying to find who's doing like some primaries in the town of Fond du Lac or friendship? Anything else?
Unfortunately, no, none of that. Kind of like school board decisions.
Yeah, we don't have any ad ones.
Yeah.
So what, how many people applied for the student council scholarship?
All of them but me. So I think I lose eight people. There was no application process, it was just strictly if you're a senior and you want to run for it, go ahead, run for it, and we'll put your name on the ballot, basically.
Alright, and I believe that we may have some recognition for Mr. Bath.
Yep. As, as the tradition here in the school district, nor Fond du Lac, Damian, I want to give you a little bit, something from the board. Alright, there you go. And then also a handcrafted blanket, if you will, for you to keep you warm. And since we found out that, where your plans are for the future, we thought maybe this would be most appropriate.
That is great.
Navy was wrong. I'm on the field, guess what color the bag is? Navy. But you're in the Air Force. Drave them over there. There you go. No, but thank you very much and appreciate you being here, not only what you did here, but with the school, up with the PAC, go-to person, and also going to the military is a big deal. I know we have some veterans on the board also, and it's, it matters. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Next, at 7:14, I will open the meeting to citizens input. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard?
Here, if I just made a comment. I just wanted to thank. I just wanted to thank anybody on the letter carrier in Fond du Lac. Actually, deliver mail north of Fond du Lac, but we had our food drive this weekend for the letter carriers. And wanted to thank everybody out in the audience that donated any goods to the food panthers. We collected thirty thousand nine hundred thirty-two pounds of food. And we've been doing this for 22 years, and our grand total is just shy of six hundred thousand pounds. So we appreciate everybody that's donated over the years and this past weekend. And we actually had Congressman Growth come on and he carried some food, and that was pretty cool to get to our take. So we appreciate everybody that helped out and donated food. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Streeter. Anyone else wishing to make any comments at this time? If not, then at 7:15, I will declare the citizens input portion of the meeting closed. And we will go into the next item, the super class report. Mr. Sado.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chisholm. Pretty exciting. We've got some fun stuff going on. As you can see, there's a lot of people out here, the crowd that decided they wanted to come to an event like this at night. And we hope you're feeling better at it. So as you can see in your board packet, we have an amazingly, amazing group of talented people underneath the leadership with some great artists. From Mr. Rastusen, to Mr. Skedella, to Mr. Reese, to Ms. Foska, Ms. Crabbe in the theater. We are blessed with some amazing, talented musicians and actresses and vocalists. It's just amazing. And kind of exciting what's going to happen. You can see the list. I'm going to turn it over to Anthony, and if Katie has anything to say also. What we're going to do is we're going to see a little bit of this talent that we have here, including we have two, one this year and one last year, that received an exemplary, which is very rare, ranking. And so that's really cool. And we have two people in the crowd that are also part of two different courses for all states, so that's pretty cool also. Also, kind of excited too, we're going to find out what next year's musical is going to be tonight. It's been under lock and key, Smith Waterhouse and whatever, it's been having her medically sealed, so it's pretty big. So I just want to thank Mr. Rastusen, Mr. Skedella, Mr. Reese, Ms. Foska, for the great talent that we have here. Also, all the teachers in the, in the school that give up their time too, so our kids can practice. And to all of you for this time for being here and wearing what you normally would wear to come and hang out at a board meeting, to take for the pride that you bring to our district. One of the things that I think about our district is I like to think of us, even though we're the Orioles, I kind of have an owl mentality. And kind of what that means, have you ever seen an owl without its wings, or when it's really wet? It's kind of a smaller thing. But when it's got its wings, it looks huge. And I hope that when you guys go throughout the state, when you go to college, when you go to workshops, when you go to competitions, you feel when people say you're from North Fond du Lac, they're like, really? You're from there? And people think it's this huge thing, it is a huge deal. We might only be about thirteen hundred kids, but we act like we're about sixteen thousand. Well done. So thanks for being here. Turn it over to Ms. Rastusen.
Thank you, Mr. Sado. Before we begin, I just wanted to recognize all of our state solo ensemble participants, not only on the vocal side, but the instrumental side as well. I'm speaking on behalf of my colleague on the instrumental side, Mr. Skedella. He was not here presently, but we had twenty-two events that made an on to the state level from the district, held at Amro. And of those twenty-two events, we had all ensembles on the instrumental side of Mr. Skedella. We had the jazz ensemble, we had the sax choir, we had the flute choir, all make it out of that. So that was pretty exciting for him. We had a tremendous, good showing from the vocal side as well. A lot of vocalists and instrumentalists are here. We even had, like we did last year, we have another exemplary award this year to Ms. Babers. Last year was to Ms. Meadows. And so with that in mind, we do have two performances this evening for you. First of all, a sophomore, Maria Reber, she'll be performing from Into the Woods on the steps of the palace, and followed by LeAnn Babers, Gimme Gimme from. Thank you. So let's start with Maria first.
You might have to stop.
He's a very smart prince. He's a prince who breaks hairs. Knowing this time I come for him. He's worth it on the stairs. I was caught up in his eyes, and I thought, well, he cares. This is why you're so smelly. Better song it takes off while you're standing here, so long as there's a love of theirs. You think wanting you want, make a decision. My love's saying I'm being hard to be, all it's a monster, baby, it's a song. You think wanting you knew, oh yeah, boy, when you know that you're not, these things are evil. And then what if you were ever afraid, it wouldn't be true. Although, how can you know who you are till you know what you want, what you don't, and which do you think? You're seeing outside that you're still, but where everything's wrong. Or where everything's right, that you know that you're not evil. And which never you think, so you're going, because you're starting to stay to the steps of the rest. It's my first decision. The choice isn't easy to make. To try, but I'll always think, I think I don't, but it's already mandatory. It's hard to deceive when you know you can't be, but you can't be married. It's a moment to say what you saw, enough, but you're sitting here, so long as there's a need, say. It's a wonderful life, the point of the show. Even if you don't care to be there, out there, there's nothing but you, and nothing to you. So if I have a choice. There's nothing to choose. Like we're not in here, guys, you want to do what you should. Just not to say, just make it clear. It's one example. Oh, shoot. And then see what else you, what I'm teaching you, with some of the shoe, and the stool, and the new. And you find something to, something you never knew, on the steps of the rest. A simple choice is nothing more. There's more that you're aware of. Very well, social world businessman, like a girl. Or paint my future on a green glass love. What kind of life am I dreaming of? I say, gimme gimme. Gimme gimme. Gimme gimme, that thing called love. I want it, gimme gimme, that thing called love. I need highs and lows, tears and laughter. Gimme a happy, happy round, now. Gimme gimme, that thing called love. Gimme gimme, that thing called love. I crave it, gimme gimme, that thing called love. Now, baby, it can't be, rich one more time. Gimme it, one more time. Gimme gimme, that thing called love. Gimme gimme, that thing called love. So I pray now, gimme gimme, that thing called love. I think I'm right, I'm seeing stars. Gimme gimme, it's like a star. Gimme gimme, that thing called love. I don't forget every beautiful thing. Give my heart to be a star. Oh, for you to love. I need, that thing called love. My spirit, here I am, in paradise, my natural life. I'm pretty tired, don't forget me, wrongy-o, and truly, I'm in fire. I see the sky, break me, fat boy, save me, my love. Gimme gimme, that thing called love.
So again, that's just a snippet of the awesome talent that we have. And from freshman to senior, we are very blessed to have such awesome students with the great upbringing that they've had from the elementary, elementary ages all the way to the high school level. And on that too, I want to recognize the two, like you said, with the honors. The WSMA honors project is a system statewide that offers auditions to students who are interested in performing with pretty much the state's elite, and those that have the same amount of passion and talent that they have. And we actually have two among us that are joining next year's middle, excuse me, mixed high school choir, and the treble high school choir. Adriana, her second year going, and Maria, her first year going, at the mixed, and Adriana at the treble. So very awesome job. They, few of, two of one hundred fifty possible positions for females to be in. And there were about sixteen hundred applicants throughout the state that auditioned, and so they got selected. And great recognition. Before I, before I bring up the musical, I also want to recognize my co-director. She has the play this coming weekend, and by all means, come on up and.
Oh, okay, come on, we can speak.
Speak about, speak about this coming weekend.
She was commercial message time.
Yes.
Yes, we're supposed to be rehearsing right now. So, yeah, we have a performance Friday and Saturday night at 7:00 PM. It's a southern comedy. They hopefully have been having a ball, I've been having a ball. It's supposed to be really funny, and it's a comedic show, and I don't know, I've been in a wheelchair. So I don't know what to say.
Tickets available at the door?
Tickets available at the door, five dollars for adults and three dollars for students, seniors and children, so.
And what's it called here?
Front Ballot K-Course.
Ah, yes. You're welcome. So come see that this coming weekend. And without further ado, I think my co-director and I are excited to share this coming November, the first weekend, November 6th, November 7th, November 8th, Horseman High School will be putting on our second annual musical. We're very excited to bring the news to you. It will be The Wizard of Oz.
Are we ready like things for flying monkeys?
We'll, we'll take, we'll keep that to you right away. We'll keep you in mind, Mr. Sado.
Wizard of Dorothy, Tin Man, Scarecrow.
That's what we have. That's all I have.
Alright. Alright, well, one more time, thank you to all of the students out here. Thank you for what you're going to be doing this weekend, what you've done in the past, and also for Ms. Crabbe and Mr. Rastusen. Thank you guys very much.
I must heal them all, we're so sorry.
Great job, guys.
I'll get the piano tomorrow.
No problem. I might play later.
Okay.
Things get blocked down during some of the conversation. I'm a giant item.
Sounds good, sounds good.
Alright, so eight to one. Right here, eight to one? Eight to one, yep. Alright, next. Alright, next, this is going to be our first of an annual presentation from Kurt Wismer and his crew, led by, I believe, the CEO, it looks like.
Basically.
Of Oriole Outfitters, Excuse me. Kurt has done a great job, this is his first year as an educator in our district, and he and Doug are currently, right now, revolutionizing what we have in our business and technology education curriculum, including Oriole Outfitters, which is a company that's run, and that's our school store, and that's what it's called. Currently resides just right next to the officer, Officer Friendly, so it's a safer area. Although it's not as exposed, and we don't get as many purchases. But also, I want to thank them also for going to games and having a mobile cart going and selling some things. So I'm really proud of Kurt and what he and his team have done, and look forward to this being the first of many years to come of the annual report that one of our businesses within the school have been doing. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Wismer, or whoever. Then it's all in.
I mean, I'll just stand by myself, too.
Guys, head over on this side, so then the camera's not blocking. There you go.
This is our, this is our annual report. This is the management team, a few of us, oh yeah, I mean, hello. This is our management team, a few of us aren't here tonight, we're missing David and Michael Bento. We are, my name is Gabby Tilke, we have Alexis Strong, Wendy, Debbie Meek, Caitlin, Haley, Hunter Breckwright, and Damian Bathwick here. This is fun. About our store, we are. I am like nervous for some reason, I don't know why. Our name is Oriole Outfitters, we are a retail management class in Horseman High School. It's a business marketing class, and it's taught by Mr. Wismer. All those profit goes to support our school. And eventually in the future, we'll be giving scholarships for like us and stuff. Well, I'm the general manager, I should probably slow down, talking really fast. I write up the schedules for the store, make sure everyone's in the store at the correct time, and everyone's just doing what they're supposed to be doing. I run the point of sale, like manage the point of sale system on our register. I also keep, like, make sure the store's intact and it's not messy sometimes. And then I manage our email account.
Alright, merchandise managers, I have something else. Normally, this is Michael and David, unfortunately, since I'm not here, I'll be covering this. Merchandise managers are in charge of purchasing, ordering, and basically designing all of our, all of our merchandise that we bring in. They're in charge of making sure that the store is neat, orderly, sometimes deciding where we're at, and they're in charge of selling at games. If we have any of our old clearance items, like when we first got our store, there's a lot of T-shirts that are still left in there. They're in charge of marking that down to a cheaper value, just to get it out of there, because some of those T-shirts were four or five years old.
Caitlin and I are the sales promotional managers. We find improving ways to present and to save, display and promote the products carried using available store frictionals.
We handle window displays and display cases, which Gwen helps with that also. It's located in the Commons in Horseman.
We range for the use of media, for example, Oriole TV, school announcements, and school paper for public.
And we manage all social media, like Instagram and Facebook.
And preparing promotional materials.
Alright, I am the financial manager. I'm the one that gets to deal with the headache of the money. I'm in charge of handling all the cash, all the deposits, the credit card deposits, anything to do with money. I write out the requisitions, make sure everything goes in an other account. I see Maria and Karen, at least I used to, at least twice a day normally. I just make sure everything that was supposed to go into our account goes into our account, checking account numbers. I send Karen a monthly square up, credit card deposit. Square up was our point of sale system we use. So anything that went through Karen, I mean, anything that went through credit card, we have to get a summary for her on a daily basis, and every month I'd send it out to Karen, so she knew how much money to send back into our account. I manage the inventory values. Anytime anything would get low, I would tell the merchandise managers that, hey, we need to order more of this. And then I was also in charge of putting all the financials together that you saw in your annual reports.
Okay, well, Glenn and I did the group for thought, and Damian helped out with that also. We prepare promotional materials. We assist with video production related to different product categories. We manage and monitor website solutions. We update communications with new items and changes. We completed various business tasks as assigned. And manage finance, Damian helped with financial records keeping and reporting.
Promotions for 2014 and 2015, we created a website, which David helped a lot with that. We created flyers, commercials, Facebook, Instagram, the display case. We made a Facebook contest, emails, and we did announcements on Oriole TV.
This is our Facebook, where we promote our clothing and our store.
And those are some of the promotions we did on Facebook. For the Facebook challenge, we gave away free cinch bank for the fifteen persons that shared that post. And we promoted our pink out shirts for the breast cancer game and for our Easter egg hunt.
This is our website, OrioleOutfitters.com. We have all the stuff that you need to know about our store. And we made it through Google Sites, impattdomain. And these are some of our commercials throughout the season for promoting our store.
If you guys want to watch them, you guys can watch them. That one's our first one.
Which one's your favorite?
Damian's featured in that one, yeah.
In pajamas.
In bloody pajamas, so.
This just needed to come off the internet.
Oh, Grandma, you've got to be impressed, I'm so happy. Grandma, you've got to be, a new pair of shoes, my gang, I don't want a new pair of shoes. I want a new sweatshirt from the Oriole Outfitters.
And let's go to the Oriole Outfitters! Come on, boys, come on, boys!
Look at that, look at you!
Oh, this one.
Twenty dollars, please. Thank you. Yay! That was short, yay! And that's Damian number one.
So where do you see these commercials?
We have them on YouTube right now, and they do play during Oriole TV. You guys want to watch any more? Feel free. Feel free to watch more.
That's the display case that's in the Commons. Gwen helps with that also, and we change it every season.
Merchandise, it's what we sell. It's, we all discuss as a team what we want to sell and what we think would sell good. What? What would sell well, I'm sorry. We are actually wearing some of the shirts we sold today. We made the I Bleed Orange, if you want to. Thank you. I Bleed Orange or Black. We did a T-shirt and a long sleeve. We have Gwen wearing it and Hunter wearing it. And me and Lexi are wearing our pink-out shirts. We sold them for the basketball game that was raised money for breast cancer. We also have the white one. Right there. Once in Oriole, we did that a little later on, just a basic white T-shirt. We also have some of our sweatshirts with the block O on it. I'm sorry. That one, we also, that one, black and gray sweatshirt, we brought that out right away. Same with the I Bleed Orange or Black. And the one with the Owen. That one, we did that, I said Sado really likes that one. We did that for our elementary schools and early learning center. And some of the BAM students got that one. It just says an Owen. Half of Owen's heads cut off, so it's like, look at me, I'm Owen. We also did teacher sales. We sent all the sweatshirts and pullovers for the teachers. And then this spring, we got to do golf and baseball for the spring sports.
All right, so this is a breakdown of our finances. On here, we have expenses of all of our special orders, our in-store merchandise and the miscellaneous. And the miscellaneous, that's including the cost of our web domain. And we also paid hoppers to do the logo that you can see in the bottom right-hand corner. They did an excellent job for that. And then on the bottom, you can also see the profits. Fortunately, our profit margins weren't that great this year. We're looking at finding a new place to buy stuff to get better profit margins. So, and if we go to the next slide, next few slides, we have all of the graphs that break down more. You can visually see how much we made. So like the girl's sales that came from the store, the expenses, the profit. And that little one is the credit card fee. Square does take a 2.75% charge on any credit card that we run through. So it's really not too bad, but it does cut into our profits a little bit. And then here is the profit broken down to each special order that we did. So we had five special orders throughout the year. We had the Owen, T-shirts, the T-shirts, sweatshirts, the baseball. We did not make a profit on the baseball. In the future, we're looking at trying to get all the sports teams to come to us, just so everything comes out of one centralized location, and there's one person doing it to make it easier on the teams. In the future, we may add a dollar or two on, just to make a little bit of profit for ourselves. And in the miscellaneous one, we had a small special order right before Christmas that we offered the teachers. Not a lot of people were into them, fortunately, and we're still barely getting our feet wet, so that's how we started out. Here, we have our inventory value. In the beginning of the year, we did have a lot of leftover merchandise that I mentioned. We did not put that up here, because we figured we got it at a zero cost. So everything that we have in there is just pure profit from our viewpoint. But in here, anything we did purchase throughout the year, we put as an inventory value. So here we are. Anything that we bought, we put at the cost that we paid for, and that's how much we have leftover in value of our merchandise.
The Food for Thought Cafe. Food for Thought Business Manager. We helped out with printing the menus, print menus, coupons for free merchandise in the cafe, order sleep or click ordering in the cafe. The online menu catering events and finances for the cafe.
Managers for next year are Caitlin Haley, which is me, Devi Gussi, Elisa Steiner, Dexter Hoff, and Triana Breckheimer. And ingredients we want to make for next year are high Easter eggs on Sunday night. We set up Friday night because they hold church events here. Order more pink-out shirts for next year. Run all our transactions, like special orders through our register. Expand beyond the high school. I get more involved with Bessie Allen and FLC. Online sales and be a solid football games.
Thank you.
And we have any questions at this time?
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
All right.
So your social media is limited to Instagram and Facebook?
At this time, it is, yes.
Are you thinking you're going to extend to Twitter now, maybe?
Probably, yeah. Well, that's inferior years to come, like Caitlin. Probably the next year, we'll adding a Twitter account, because lots of people tweet.
Unfortunately, we have a slight problem with the school wifi. Everything like Facebook, Twitter is all blocked. And just to get Facebook set up, it was a stream hassle.
Well, that was going to be my next question.
What's all the dagers coming in?
I know that Facebook's not available to students for the typical accounts, so how do you?
We went on Mr. Wismer's computer, and we set it up there.
It's all managed underneath my domain.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that way, it's transferable to future students.
And you're welcome for blocking Facebook. Because it would take up too much, it's too much of a temptation for you.
Because it'd suck up all the bandwidth, and there wouldn't be any space left to do anything else. So can someone explain to me what the Food for Thought, and here merchandise manager, you said coordinate necessary stock, the store manager for our person, so the Food for Thought, is Food for Thought an outlet, so you can purchase material there as well?
What it is, Food for Thought Cafe, is the cafe that Lewinsky is running as a business team. We are supposed to be helping run that. This year, we did not have quite help out with that as much, because she's trying to get on her feet and try to throw everything on her own. But I did a lot of helping with her, and then the Food for Thought managers did as well. I basically helped her deposit money, try and keep it away of like a record of what she's selling, how much money she should be having, and see where she's having profit and or loss. They were basically in charge of all the advertising, creating the menu and various items like that.
Okay, so it's really a separate operation?
It's a completely separate entity to us, yes.
Anybody else?
I was just going to ask if you have like rights or exclusive rights to do apparel now? I know, you know, sometimes the club would come up with an idea that they want to make some money. Are you able to, or do you have to convince them to let you do that? Just a curious. Like, like when you're, I bought a jury type thing that the National Honor Society was doing as a fundraiser. So now that you guys are here, would you go to them?
If, let's say Key Club is doing a special order. If they like, we can come to it, and we can take care of all the money, the ordering of everything for it. So they don't have to worry about that. They just have to worry about like donating any of the proceeds or anything like that that they make off of it. But we are not saying, hey, you have to come to us. It's, if you want, we're willing to do it for you. That's how it is right now.
Would you guys be willing to work with the Oriole Nation Booster Club?
Definitely.
That would be fundraising for clubs and sports and music and everything?
We'd love to work with them.
Would you? I think I know some people could make that connection happen, and as we get deeper into that, that could be a really good relationship, I think. What do you think?
I think so. Make it work.
All right, well.
Very nice job. Good presentation.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
All right, thanks, Mr. Wismer. I'll turn it off.
Thank you.
I'm getting spoiled right at the beginning. We could get more? Just, that's just the beginning. One of the things that I really liked seeing is, and I talked, and we'll talk more about this with the movie theater, is there's opportunities so that what we have, like what the school store, Oriole Outfitters, and also Food for Thought, is brings that relevance to our students, not only in the business classes, but when you look at promotions and you look at, we can look at editing and writing, and we can look at, you know, the business aspect, the finances, math. To have the opportunities for our kids to actually have actual businesses and have that real life experience instead of just pretend, it's huge. And with Kurt, with Mr. Wismer and his leadership, it's a whole different world down there. And Mr. Forsyte's really plugging into it, doing great. And that's just the beginning. We haven't even tapped Mr. McDowell and what that 3D printer can do to make stuff, too, to start selling also. And then with the Food for Thought, as Damian said, next year, there'll be more involvement after we figure out kind of what's going on. And then quite possibly, depending on what decisions are, what kind of conversations tonight in the future, we could definitely look at this movie theater becoming quite a profitable enterprise, and which I would very much recommend then, that they would go back into curriculum of the high school. So just a lot of opportunities to have kids really have hands-on experiences. Damian, what would you say about your experiences with Oriole Outfitters and Mr. Wismer and all that?
It was a great experience at the beginning of the year. I didn't realize what I was getting myself into. I actually took, I switched classes three days after the school year began. Just I took a course I didn't really want to. And I didn't realize what I was getting into. I figured this was going to be like a basic business class. I'm going to be bored for a year. And two weeks into it, I'm like, what did I get myself into? Next thing you know, they're throwing finances at me. I learned a lot, but it's a lot more than you think. It's a lot more once you start dealing with an actual business compared to, hey, having a virtual business, this is what you're running. Like you're dealing with real money, and this is like, you have to sell this, otherwise next year, it's not going to be here. So it was a great experience. It was a lot of work, but it was definitely worth it.
So that's a
Can I just say, I just wanted to say that Damian was a pleasure to work with. He, from the very beginning of the school year, came in, introduced himself, told us what he was doing. And we would see him, we saw you more at the beginning of the year, but as, after time went on, you know, we started to exchange reports. He was a complete professional coming into us. So hopefully, you did learn something. And I remember you once saying that this kind of made you think about possibly going into the business world.
It actually really has. As much of a headache as it is, it's almost like you just want to keep going at it, because it's like really fun, and there's always more to learn. And it opened up my eyes. It really did. I always figured like accounting people are sitting there. And it's more like you're ripping out your hair as you're smiling, enjoying it, and it doesn't make sense, but it's true. You understand.
I do. I get it.
It's true. Definitely worth it. Definitely enjoyed it.
Well, thank you very much, Damian. And once, and people, once again, we got Kurt last year in July. And I'm very, very convinced that the right people are your number one commodity. And the more that we can get people that come in and that are really dedicated, know what they're doing, and challenge kids, and that's what it's all about. Same thing with Anthony and Jerry and everything. What you saw today doesn't just happen. Pretty exciting, so. All right, future board of gen items. In June, we're going to have our human resource guides. I'm going to be talking with support staff and educators this week. Not a whole bunch of changes in educator guides. We all have a culture and climate committee. We haven't had any real issues. I mean, the big, it's all about the money and stuff. We have a very professional environment. The amount of days that have been shared is quite, it's quite humbling and cool, and I think it really helped with the fabric, with some difficulty some of our staff had. So I think this educator guide and the way that it's structured is really, really working well as far as for our environment. So, but we'll have those guides that'll come forward. And the hourly wage employees, and then the educator guide, they still have to work on the administrative guide, and then we'll have everybody covered. That'll come WI yearly approval, and hopefully a new board member. Now, we have that special meeting coming. I've got nobody. I haven't had anybody even call to ask about.
I went to the Optimus Globe, and there's like 30 odd guys that are trying to cricket.
Yeah. So if you know of anybody, I did email somebody who was a writing candidate, that emailed me something. I said, hey, they're here. If you want any information, it's there. So if you know of anybody, let them know that the competition of interviews might not be as intimidating as what one might think. So just don't have anybody, but I think if we could, it only takes one, that one good candidate. Are you a tea?
I will be by the time, May 24th.
All right. Let's see, and then there could be some other things, but that'll be coming up. And then remember, well, we'll get to that. So then announce graduation, May 31st. Be there if you could. 22-1, if you could. All right, we'll be up on the stage handing out diplomas. Stuff, Pete, you've got all of them there. Samantha's still working on it. Samantha's not here. Her son had discombobulated surgery or?
Hand noise.
Hand noise. Hand noise after me. But graduation, there's still, she's going to get, not every student's going to make it. We know that. We want 100% graduation, but what she'll get to me in the next week or so is a list of all the students that are graduating, with an explanation of what's going on, what the future looks like. So you got, that's what we've been doing in the future, in the past. That way, when you look at, you know, hey, our graduation rate's at, you know, 91 this year. Last year was at 94. When you're looking at one or two people that cause that to go, and plus, our district isn't, is in a district where, hey, you're really close, just show up to school and you can pass, make them do things. So of the students that don't graduate maybe or walk, they'll get done within a month after school's over, or come back and finish in a semester. Or with learning for independence, we actually, they choose not to graduate so that they can have more opportunities at MPTC, so. And that's just another quick announcement is Barb Zimmerman, who was our, one of the people with Debbie and Jana, we get, that really started the LFI. She's having some health problems, is going to be stepping down. So Debbie's already looking at getting somebody else out there. That's an hourly wage employee. They don't have a contract, so that's something that I won't be bringing aboard, but Barb's done a great job. We actually have Barb Jay Zimmerman, who cuts the lawn. You might see Jay out there. He used to be the Fondleac Head Custodian. And then Carrie Zane, who is Barb and Jay's daughter. She's one of our new special ed teachers. So as she said in her letter, one of the Zimmerman's will no longer be part of Oriole Nation, which I responded, once in Oriole, always in Oriole. Also, just a really big update, next Monday, 5 o'clock, I'll be sending something out on Wednesday at FLC. We'll start doing tours. We're going to hit that. I know you, we have BAMs. BAMs is that night, the awards is Monday. So, but we'll be touring, and we'll be looking at Friendship and ELC, Bessie Allen and Horseman. Hopefully, that the tour will only go for two hours. We'll kind of walk through and give some highlights and have maps for everybody, so they can kind of see what's going on. That will probably be our last meeting for the facilities committee until we get together then, probably in August. We'll, we'll get together in August then and start talking about what we see from our facilities and start developing some plans. Also have Bray back again and talk about the needs and start developing ideas. Oriole Nation.
The facility's fine?
Fine, yeah. And if you can't come right away and want to hook up, just give me a call. I'll tell you where we're at, at 6:30 or 6:00 or wherever. But we'll start at Friendship, and then we're going to ELC, Dave, would you say?
Yeah.
And then we'll come over to Bessie Allen, and then we'll go to Horseman. Most of the tours, I think, you know, we'll talk about some ideas and some different things that already were in the Bray thing, but we'll bring up areas of concern, and also some other areas that are pretty good, so. And remember, that's the whole idea, is this facility thing, looking at that 10-year plan that we were talking about with that Fund 46. Also looking at with the referenda, or being fulfilled soon. We do have some needs, and maybe that's something that we could look at doing in the next two to three years, begin. Oriole Nation off and running. Starting Wednesday, I'm going to, I got it out to all the committee members and coaches. It'll be coming out to everybody. Currently, Walon Weekend is going to be run underneath the school designated Fondleac, just because Oriole Nation isn't up and going. But once it is up and going, we'll no longer be the agents for insurance and all that kind of stuff. It'll all be on the Oriole Nation. We've had a lot of positive feedback, people working together, excited. Ryan Ramali just sent out a really great email to all the parents of youth basketball and coaches. I really feel people are like, you know what, let's work together instead of apart. And we can, this is going to have a huge positive impact on our kids, too. Zach, Ruck, and Pat Colby are doing some leadership during Oriole, what's that called? Oriole, Oriole time at the high school, about leadership. One of the things we're finding out is that we don't have a lot of leaders at high school or middle school. The thing is, is that kids aren't taught that. You know, people think leadership just comes. Well, they're talking about leadership and setting higher goals, and I think Oriole Nation is going to bring a lot of pride to it. There's some there already, but we're hoping to really knock that out of the park and really start to see success on the athletic field as well as in the arts and with the classes and stuff. One thing, for instance, Samantha emailed me last night, hey, the junior class of next year is kind of nervous. Do they get the concessions? Do they get whatever? I said, hold on, have that person come to. hold on, have that person come to the Oriole Nation, and we'll figure all that stuff out. We have Dan Hyvley, we have Kelly Maurer, we have Matt Bertram, we have really good representation from the high school. We have the Stefani's, we have Miramontes, we have good representation from the music parents also, and all the sports. We're going to, I really think this is going to work. You're going to get a website, on that website has a bunch of information. We're using Volunteer Spot, you guys can sign up to volunteer at Waldo Weekend. Also, should be pretty cool. And this is just the beginning of something I think that will be bigger than any of us expect. So, other than that, any other announcements that you guys have? You did receive from all the educators along with the link from Samantha, all the dates that are coming up. You can hit some of those, dear graduations on Friday. So, that's coming up in the Bessie Allen's next Wednesday, the 20th next, or next Monday, excuse me, the 20th next Wednesday is the scholarship for the Horseman Awards. So, a lot of fun stuff going on. And remember, no finale now. At the end of the school, I'm in charge of chicken, right? I'm going to get enough this year, what did we figure on that one?
You said you were cooking out.
Oh, yeah, we're cooking out, my bad. We're cooking out, we're going to have hamburgers and brats.
T-shirt. I am.
So, we're going to have the last meal at school, it's an early release. I'll be cooking brats and hamburgers up front, as long as Jill doesn't get angry with me because I'm taking business away from her. So, we'll be cooking that, and then we'll have some foods here, more than welcome. Kind of a, hey, have a good one. Is anything going on with Dr. Rup, for Dr. Rup?
We already had her houblé at Friendship.
We have a surprise IEP special ed one, but it's under wraps here, where we're going to write an IEP on her. And the special educators and I are putting together kind of a dorky IEP on her, but it's kind of fun.
That's her only retiree, right, no? And other than that, anything else, guys? Any of your stuff? Dave?
That's it?
That's all I got.
Okay. Next on the agenda is new business. And one consider, discuss and consider moving Board of Education meeting to the third Monday in July, July 20th, 2015.
All right, this is something that we talked about, we did in the past, we actually did the second week, but I think that was a little bit early last year. This will give us a little more time, plus it's outside of, when the, when the audit will be after that, should be pretty light, try to keep it as light as we can. So, plus that, I know, I know Pete, you were going to be gone if it was on the 27th. It seems to be a better time hitting it right in there so we can get max attendance. And that's, that's what we want, is we have max attendance for everyone.
Any other questions or discussions from the board?
It's regular time, correct?
Yep, seven o'clock.
Here now, I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'm making a motion to change the Board of Education date to the third Monday in July.
All right, we'll get seconded to further discussion. Here now, roll call vote, please.
Streeter?
Yes.
Goldofsky, yes. Chisholm?
Yes.
Yes.
Next is discuss and consider educator contracts for the 2015-2016 school year.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Chisholm. You will see on this list in here, there is, in the packet, there's a list of 2015-16 educators. I put them all in here with their school, and then I said grade level, like Joel Drew's a first grade, first grade. But you can see where they're all teaching. And we've done something, I think that is very, I think this is where you get the most high-quality people, is we've tried to make as many 100% contracts as we can. There are some 67% with Tom Kaiser, John Carey, Stacy Beehill, and Kim Broden. They're at the partial, Kim's at 60%, but all the rest are 100%. And then what you'll see too is, is that the contract, remember contracts evolved from Act 10 that have more information. The contract is pretty much the same except for the date here changed. And then this yellow part, which says, it talks about the collective bargaining, there is no collective bargaining unit, so we just struck that out. And then the other thing is, is that we have 177 Shelby teaching days. Remember, instead of early release, nine early releases, we're going to have three full days of in-service, so there actually is only 177 teaching days. Other than that, there is no change on the contract, and all of these amounts are the same as they were last year. So, if something does happen, as we talked in our budget meeting earlier, then we could possibly look back and reevaluate those. But this is the, and then right in front of Dr. Goldofsky, you'll see there's a bunch of the contracts there, two copies each, so that would be the clerk and the president. Did we get stamps made yet?
No.
That's something that, on your time, just let us know, you can come in and we can get your stamps made so that you can sign your stamp, but this, we're going to have to sign soon. I can a little careful, but you know people can help with that, I'm guessing. So, shall we guess?
What about the form for the check sign?
Yep, we have to do that, yep.
All right, so, we can approve those as a group of contracts, I'm assuming?
I would declare potential conflict of interest then, or even myself. Discussion.
All right, so I'd entertain a motion then, that we approve the educator contracts for the 15-16 school year. I'll second that. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Streeter?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Goldofsky, yes.
Upstand.
All right, next is to discuss and consider the contracts for KidsCan, Karen Bartel, and Linda Krebsbach, social worker.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm. Two contracts that we've, they haven't changed. Last year there was a, I believe, a 1.5% increase, otherwise that number was stagnant for two years. So, this year, Debbie talked with Karen and also Linda, that they're willing to do the same amount for the same amount of pay as they got last year for this year. So, you can see, the only thing that's changing in the contract center I recommended is that the dates, for the most part. We also, on the upside, I know that we had some conflicts of understanding with how Karen was doing with KidsCan and how the consultant was. And I've seen last year, we did some changing and did some evolving of things, plus we had some staffing changes. And I thought we had a very positive year with how that interaction with the supports were. Quite different, I would say, than in the past, and I thought, there's really good problem solving, especially with our autism population. Karen's been a huge asset for us. One of the things that we did make sure is in her contract, she realizes she's an independent contractor, and we are not responsible for insurances, and it's articulated in there, and she understands that. And we actually hire her through her LLC KidsCan. And then Linda Krebsbach, I don't know if you can meet a nicer lady, or who knows more people in the Holy Land than her. And for, we have her for two days a week, but the reality of it is, we have her probably for three or four. She's, she's a great lady, and we're, she retired from Seavish as a social worker what, four or five years ago, and came here and has been here ever since with us. And she does a great job. So, I'm very happy with them and talking with Debbie and administrators. I'd like to recommend.
Karen's with us four days a week.
I had mentioned this last year, I guess I'm having a little trouble with the disparity in what we're paying each other. You know, they're both professionals who work with their kids in different areas or different types of things. But, you know, and I can see that they're not getting the same maybe, that's quite a difference in the hourly rate.
And that's, and so responsibilities and roles that they have, Karen has quite a few more, and expertise and training and expectations than what Linda does. So, that's a discrepancy is what the expertise, and what also the market drives. A social worker is, you know, we're very competitive with that rate, where when we look for autism consultants, those are easy to find at all. And the ones that you do find right now, if we didn't have Karen, we'd have to be going through a CISA. And it's, you pay for what the market is, and I think that's the main reason. Would you say Debbie also?
You know, the degrees required.
Any other questions from the board members? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those contracts.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Goldofsky, yes.
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Streeter?
Yes.
Karen?
Next is discuss and consider summer school educator contracts.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm. I want to thank Adam. Melanie and Debbie too have been working on this, Samantha too, but Adam's the, our administrator for summer school, done a great job. This is the earliest I can ever remember us having, you know, summer school teacher contracts out normally, it's an after the fact, once we get it going. So, these are names that we know for sure we'll be having. We don't know if it's one class or four classes, but we know that they'll be working summer school, and that's 21. How much is it, the summer school paid?
21.
43.
22.
21-43, no, I remember that number.
43.
But, so they all make the same hourly rate, and there's a thing in there with prep time and all that. So, but these are from middle school to high school that we already have secured that are ready to be teaching summer school. So, and it'll be more in June, as we think.
I'll declare my potential conflict of interest again on this one. See, maybe this will last.
Other questions or discussions from the board? I have a question for you. So, if summer school counts in our full-time equivalency, do we try to mark it, how fun it is to come?
Yes.
Do summer school try to get those numbers up?
More so now than ever. The pool, we get to count swim lessons as long as we have a teacher that kind of oversees it. We were looking at trying to get an educator to do boating and RV, we didn't get that this year, though, did we? And hunter safety. So, there's different things that we can do. And now, for summer school, this is the first time we're going to be offering credit. Mr. Monty is going to be teaching freshman history. So, there's probably, what, 20, 25 freshman students that are going to be taking summer school to meet their qual, their required class for the fall, which then opens up them an opportunity to take a different class in the fall. So, we're seeing how that works. So, this could be a great thing. And just kind of, as a, kind of, just put in your head, next year, probably the biggest change that we're going to be looking for, for 2016-17, is moving the high school start time till 8. That way, we can start looking at a zero hour. So, we could see kids that have an opportunity from 7 to 8 to have a whole other class period. A lot of schools are doing that, once again, to give more opportunities for kids to take more classes. Damian could probably tell you, everything's fit in, whatever class, especially if you're like in a calculus or Spanish 4 or 5, it only goes this time. If you're in band or something, you have less choices. So, we're trying to get more and more opportunities for kids. In summer school, we're starting to see, Mr. Monty took advantage of it. I think Ms. Crabbe might be teaching a class. And then there is the remediation. So, students who have failed courses also are taking some courses, hopefully get that caught up. So.
I think we have a great touch, we have a lot of staffers that will promote it within their families that they work with and say, hey, here's a class I recommend for your son or daughter. And again, it could be a fun class or a class that they think might benefit them with academic skill of reading or math or something like that too. So, I think teachers, administration, we all kind of get the word out and make sure we get those numbers as high as they can to benefit the district and, of course, our students.
And what, we're offering now a reading remediation also on a bigger level too. And what's that program that we?
Reading Plus.
Reading Plus. And so, for instance, Ethan Sadoff, who is a reluctant reader, apparently he likes doing other things instead of reading. I don't know if anybody else has ever noticed that. And it seems to be a gender thing, although no, Lily didn't like reading either. But, so, you know, we're having that opportunity, which won't eve, will not only help, like Ethan, so hey, you take that and then you can do Legos and fun stuff, but we're hoping that it really does have an impact on helping kids get caught up. And maybe not even having a summer slide, but actually have a summer increase for those that need it most. So, that's pretty exciting too.
Any other questions? Call for roll call vote, please.
Do you have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had a head of the car, car at the door there. I'd entertain a motion for approval of the summer school educator contracts.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Now, would you go and call them?
Streeter?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Goldofsky? Yes.
Upstand.
Next is discuss and consider the 2015-2016 student fees, identified as the food service fees and the school fees.
I'll go through the school fees first. No real changes. The only changes that we see is where it looks at solo ensemble. Remember, last year we had Anthony and Jerry come and Mike and say that it's going to be a per event instead of a cart launch. Somebody who's going to do more is going to have to pay more. And we looked at what that would look like and if kids need to help. So, that seemed to work well. Didn't have any negative impact from that, so that's separate than this. And then, and then you can see a support to help students in solo ensemble fees will provide by the Oriole Nation Booster Club with music parents. Music parents be part of that, that's what the whole idea is. If you got a kid who wants to be in four different things, but they're in need of help, that's never going to keep them from not doing it. So, then technology protection fee to high school is a mandatory thing, but if they don't use it, then they can carry it over right now. And the middle school's optional. We're looking right now, we're actually in the plus, almost breaking even. But that's one thing we're going to monitor next year to see what that cost looks like. We might have to look at our self-funding insurance protection fee and changing that after this year. So, we'll monitor it. Right now, we're looking okay, but we're anticipating maybe having to revisit it. But this right here is, once again, the school district North Fondleac, probably the only school district in the state of Wisconsin that doesn't charge a technology fee because of belief is that this equipment is necessary for learning. So, and then.
The high school fee is, that's required.
Yes, because they take it home. And they're, the history of the iPad and the cases that we have, there's like minimal breakage, very small if any. Chromebooks are a whole different story. Teenagers seem to not be as, I wouldn't say, I think maybe there's other priorities. And like when they'll come into Miss Flood and they'll say, look at my screen, it's broke. And they'll push it right where it's broke, and they're holding on to it, you know, or a pet's leg. But I think now, like you'll see Damian's, that's the oldest version we have. Okay?
So is that a Chromebook?
No, that's not, but the Chromebook was a silver one. So, you would have had the oldest version. But now, they're getting better and better and better. And so, and kids are getting more used to having them too. So, and I think next year with the high school having to utilize the IQ, the learning management system, to get used more and more and more. So.
And I can tell you, those Chromebooks actually break a lot easier than an iPad does, as weird as that sounds. Like, I've broken two different Chromebooks. I honestly can't even tell you how. I put them in my backpack, and I take care of my backpack really well, and I pull it out and I get home and it's shattered. I've broken my Chromebook more than I've broken any other electronic device ever, including a cell phone. So.
And you had one of the oldest ones. The newer ones get better and better, they're built better.
Yeah, that's what I've heard. Do we do a little in-service or whatever with students on?
Like you wouldn't believe. When they come in to go watch a video, sign things off, you know what happens with those. But once they keep breaking them, they tend to get it a little bit better. And it's usually somebody else's fault. If you'd ask Miss Flood, she has a lot of great stories about how very rarely is it a student's fault for breaking.
My cats don't know.
Yeah, or my friend bumped me, or something. But it's working pretty well. We still have some outstanding fees. With graduation, we should get caught up on that. But, and then you'll see for athletic passes, adult 25, family passes $50, that's two adults plus a graduated children that may be in the house. We'll go with the President Obama rule of, you know, if your kid's within, you know, that they could still get insurance, you could count them, I guess. But then we're also going to waive all fees for citizens over 60 years old, or you're 60 years young. And they can get the passes at the game, so they don't have to keep being asked. And then all North Fondleac students, we used to just have high school to try to get them there. Then it's kind of like, why would we be charging the middle school and elementary? It's the same thing. What we didn't want, we don't want to see happen is the students come and get just dropped off and the parents leave. And if that happens, that's something administration will work with. But it should be something that should be helpful. So, that's the fees. Any questions on our school fees?
Well, would you consider putting on the last one, all North Fondleac students free with parent or adult, actually right on it, rather than just trying, you know, because free right there, I would say they think they can just drop them on.
I think, well, we got middle school kids who could come in, to elementary. If it become, that was always the rhetoric of why we wouldn't do it. But I think if we see it abused, we could definitely address it and neglect, and we can call social, it'd be a lot of different things. Plus, they hang out. It's, the ones that you want to help to understand that they shouldn't do it, the message just doesn't get received. You know, it's like the ones, it's like the teachers, the parents who come to teacher conferences. Cool, you know? So, we're working through that, we're going to get there. But just a side note, DL, how many people did we have up at the Mother's Day Cal?
85 people, I think if they count as a factor.
Which is awesome.
Probably double last year.
Probably double, yeah.
More people in, the better off we are, that's what our mindset is. Get the kids into school, have them feel an ownership of school, then that's how we, that's our biggest safety draws right there. All right, students, the student food service. All right, student, the student food service can't do anything about it. When I will publish these, these will not be on here. Only put these on here for the board. So, this, the daily one used to be 225, now it's 230. Maria found out that some we were increasing too much, others we weren't increasing enough, so you'll see there's either five for the lunch or 15 for breakfast. And so, you can see those changes. Once again, this has, these have to increase because we get reimbursed at such a level from the federal government for a free and reduced lunch program, which fluctuates anywhere from the middle 40s to 60% at FLC, kind of right in there. So, if we want to participate in that program, we can't be charging a lot less for the students who don't qualify for free or reduced, thus supplementing their lunches. So, that's, we have, that came back four years ago, so we have to, if we want to be part of the free and reduced lunch program, we have to continually increase them. Because of our free and reduced numbers, there are two really good positive things that happened for all of our students. And one of them is at ELC where every kid gets a breakfast and they don't pay regardless of their economic status. And that cost the district about $700 a year. That was easier to do than we could afford that. And then also summer school, we qualified for a federal grant that everybody in the whole community, all kids, even if they come to summer school or not, can come in and use food and get food for free. So, the Sadoff, so Ethan will get on his bike, drive down there at 7:15, get breakfast, go to class, get done with his classes, have lunch, go home. And you don't even have to be in school to come and utilize that program. It's a community-based program. And what you'll see in the Fund 80, we actually take some of the aides that watch that, that supervise that, out of our Fund 80 because it's open to the whole community. And I'll let Principal Aaron over at, at St. Paul's know, too, that he can tell his students. Remind me to do that tomorrow.
All right. Any questions or discussion from the board on fees or lunch prices? Here now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the fees for 2015-2016.
So.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Goldofsky, yes. Chisholm?
Yes.
Streeter?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, discuss and consider an emergency response plan for 2015-2016.
I said that, and as I went through that emergency response plan, there are some dates I did miss that I didn't highlight in yellow and some that I highlighted in yellow, I actually put the wrong year. I kept it at the same year, actually, I think I went back to 2014. Regardless, you can see the major changes. Most of them are on page seven, and that's where we reference ALICE training. Also, one area that I didn't, we're changing it from teachers to staff because it doesn't matter if it's an educator, instructional aide, person, a lunch server. It doesn't matter who they are. It's not just an educator that's in charge of the safety of our kids. And especially with the ALICE that Tom Kubis has helped to lead us through, where it's more about situational, where the, that whole idea of alert and then counter and engage, all those types of things, escape, flee. So, that's all. And you can see in that thing, that, that's the main change is putting the ALICE language in, along with changing some names. Mary Jo Sal's name was in there, that was overlooked, that was taken out and Becky Markwart was put in. Heidi April is taken out and put high school counselor until that gets put in there. So, that's the only changes. And we have, we'll have our security summit again in October. We'll look at what happens with our budget and if there's anything that we can do to increase more cameras. And one of the facility study things that we'll look at is locations of offices and also safety things that we can add to this. But as I stated in, in the report, the state of Wisconsin says that every three years, we need to bring this to the board. It's the administration's thought, my thought, that the board should see this every year and we should be going over it every year and talking about it every year, bringing it up to our parents every year so that we can stay on top of things and change. And ALICE is a new thing that we brought in and we can learn more and more about.
Is NIMs something that's new or is that, I mean, is that relatively new or?
NIMs actually came as of, two things, 9/11 and Hurricane Katrina. And when that happened, it was about how the federal government and emergency response systems dealt with those types of situations.
But there's like always been an emergency response plan and that just became part of it?
Correct. And one thing about NIMs that changed, too, is for us, is we use more plain language is than ever before. Like, it used to be, like, on the back of your name tag, you had code blue, code red, code green. The idea was, hey, you know what the code is, you say it and then nobody freaks out. Now, if something happens, hey, we got an active shooter that's in the library. Or we have an angry parent that's in the back hall of FLC by this door. We have a situation with the student that's having a medical procedure or medical reaction to something in the cafeteria. So, we say those things lock and hold, so it's plain language, people know what's going on. And that's, that's a lot, that was a big change. And NIMs was a part that helped to grow that with that mindset.